I'm the new Castle City Council, New York Council meeting on Monday, December 4th, 2023. Please rise to the platform.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, I do it. Can I get approval of the agenda?
May I make a motion to approve the agenda for today?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Monday, November 20th, 2023.
Your Honor, I know that we approved the minutes as written here for the November 20th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Swearing in, new officer, McKenzie Kersh. Have you come on up? I'm just doing business and not going to work either, okay? I'm gonna raise your hand. I am State Your Name.
I am McKenzie Kersh.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm that I will support.
And affirm that I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated.
That I have not knowingly violated.
Any law related to my election or appointment.
Any law related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Well, welcome. I'll have you get this time over here.
Yes, ma'am.
Any nominations for recognition? Um, I would like to nominate the chamber and all that, um, who has participated in the latest parade, um, which was really nice and successful from my side. Uh, we have no certificates of recognition. Uh, citizens business in writing, number one, Ian Cole's, uh, holds sewer forgiveness. November 20th, 2023, I am asking for a forgiveness on the sewer, uh, pro raid as I had an outside water break at my shop located at 3163 West Main Street. I wasn't aware of it until the evening of the 19th. After reviewing my security camera, I was able to determine that the break was visible on the 12th. It was, it was close to the sewer opening that wasn't securely closed off, but was determined that it was blocked as it was coming up at another sewer opening. And so it was obvious that the ground was wet and the water ran off around the area. Would also like to ask for some grace on the water, if at all possible, since we weren't able to catch it right away over the duration of seven days, since we aren't there every day. Ian Cole. And then it looks like they're looking for a sewer forgiveness of $1,241.07, etc. And this was verified?
Yes, we investigated it. We support the forgiveness.
I'm going to do a forgiveness on this, Mr. Ian Cole's misfortune at 3163 West Main.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Moving on to citizens business verbal, this is first things, travel commission.
Thank you. I guess I owe you an apology. I was told I should have been here last. I was on the, for last meeting. I thought it was this meeting, so it was screwed up. I apologize. But when I, I brought a bunch of stuff from, basically, this is last year's, last year's budget, how we spent it, how, you know, how the funds were dispersed to the community, and some miscellaneous information on, uh, flyers and things like this. Just gonna let you have the whole thing where you can sit in the office and look at it at your leisure. All right, um, our budget this year is the same as it was last year. We've, um, actually been doing very well with the distribution of the money, uh, like community events and co-op advertising. We budgeted $10,000 and we're right at, uh, or $12,000, excuse me, but we're right at $10,000 spending in the year. And that's where that account closed up for each one of those accounts. We had an overall total budget of $92,000 last year, and that's because of the VET tax. Now that the state has taken over, it's been a steady progression of checks coming in every month. And we've been able to increase our contracts with, um, uh, certified folder who distributes already printed material throughout all portions in here in Wyoming, but also outside of Wyoming, trying to get people to come in. They print and distribute. Plus, we have lots of our own, uh, material that we print up and distribute locally through here. Um, let's see here. Couple more line items. The chambers, they got over three, 13,000. And we have not cut off any funding for chambers this year or anything. So they're still getting their funding from us. All right, uh, administration, you'll see, is 2%. It's $2,300. That's basically for paper, printing ink, you know, whatever our treasurer and secretary need in order to do the job. It's, it's only 2% of our budget. So I think, you know, we're well within, and I think we're managing that part of the money very well. Funding requests, we got over $9,000 in that category. But what we did too is that this past year, we added a new category, which is called new events. And we put $5,000 into it. So somebody that comes to town and say, hey, we need to advertise, we're moving from Gillette to here. We want to do it here at the fairgrounds. This is just one instance we've had this year. So we were able to go out or dip into our funds and give them $2,000 for banners and advertising and all this stuff without having to amend our budget. So that's, that's a big thing with the state. If we have to amend our budget, we have to request it and send it into the state and they have to approve it. And that could be, you know, months' process with us. So that's why we put in that, that extra little funding that we can have it, where it can dip into somebody new that comes into town. We can help them and bring that event to us. And it's worked this year. So far, for one event. We're hoping it'll expand and we can do a couple more every year, bring more and more events into the fairgrounds and anywhere that they would like to have. You know, they just have to come to us and request it. You'll also see two, uh, blank applications towards the end of that bundle there, which is the co-op advertising, event advertising. Just so that you know how we break it down and how we assign money to those events to points. All right, so last year, we took all the events, we assigned points to everything, put it into our money, and every point was worth like $54. And then whatever points they had, times that, that's what they were allotted for. And then they're guaranteed that money, they just have to send in the receipts after their event, and then we issue them their money. So basically, they have to spend the money first, pay those receipts, and we pay back. That's how our system works. But every year, we have to pass a budget to set that money aside. And so it's, it's been an ongoing thing. And like I said, our budget's increasing every year. And hopefully, we can get over $100,000 spending next year. We're hoping. And that means more money for events, more money for beautification. We got, we'll have more money for chambers, you know, funding. But they just haven't put in for it. We've had a lot of problems where they've put in for it, but they're not, they're late five. We try to work with them. So this person, well, as an organization out of Upton this year was two months late five. Instead of giving them everything we set aside for them, we only gave them half. I said, if you file it on time, you would have got all of it. So, you know, we're trying to work with the public still. We just don't cut them off. All right, we just try to work with them and get them to work with our system on how it's set up, because we're regulated by the state, we're monitored by the state. And we have to show these things. All right, um, as far as any other distributions of money, wait, you know, you'll see all there. It's quite a bit. And you'll see it anywhere from beautification, you know, like the dirt coppers, we pay for all that soil and plants every year, for all the planters that are all, not only here, but in Upton. Because, you know, we work pretty closely with Upton. Upton's done really good this year. Actually, better than Newcastle, started bringing in events and, uh, you know, putting in for co-op advertising, event advertising. They've done very good. They surpassed Newcastle. And I expect people to do it even more, because they got the economic development co-mingled in with the chamber and it's booming. It's booming there. They're constantly on it and they're doing very well. I just hope we can keep that trend going through the whole county this coming next year. Um, we've had a report. It was a state report on how counties did per county of Wyoming. And we read what happened here. We went to our digital advertiser, which is TD&amp;G of Rapid City. And, because there was a few things that were pointed out to us about hard-to-find website, couldn't get on the website, or things like this. So they went back in to upgrade keywords, key phrases, in order for that to be a lot easier. And what I'd like to see the city council do is, go ahead, just spontaneously get onto our website, see how easy it is to get to it, and just, you know, give us some feedback. Because the only way we knew we had problems, it was feedback through the newsletter journal and then other people on our board, is that how difficult it was, or things didn't, you know, pop up, or things weren't upgraded. So to have that feedback, then we're able to bring that feedback to our, uh, TD&amp;G, which is our digital advertiser. And with the digital advertising, we've been really picking up heavily this year. We've dropped a few billboards because they're a bad location and put that into digital advertising. And so that's the way things are going, but we've been slowly doing it, anywhere from a landing page now all the way up to a full-fledged website. And it's taken a few years and a lot of money. But, you know, COVID money and things like that really helped out with that. So like I said, we're moving right along. We're, we're giving out the money best we can. We just need people to come in and apply for it. Uh, the regular events like, you know, Main Street, uh, Madison Main, and the Fall Festival, car show, that's, that's a given. They're on it every year, and it's increasing every year, bringing more and more people in and really helping out the community. Um, like I said, this is all, basically, last year's materials. This year's budget's approximately the same. Uh, next year's budget, we're hoping to increase more. All right, um, and that's it. Um, you got any questions?
No, I did ask Stacy to scan this and email it to the council. So do you need to pack?
No, that's for y'all to look at whenever you have time to look at it. A lot of this, sorry for some of the mess, but a little past two stone starts. My material's been in a car, so some of this got wet and there might be some running ink on it. Um, and another thing, uh, my tenure is up. It was up, I remember what, a month ago. All right, um, I don't know how you want to advertise for a position or anything. That's all up to you. Uh, I will be submitting for, I do have letter, right? Submit it now if you'd like.
No, we got it.
You got it?
Yeah.
Fantastic.
How do we do this, Madam Mayor?
Well, I know, um, we started inconsistent in having the groups advertise, um, for applications and have deadlines in there and there. So we'll have to do that.
Well, I know people that have, that are interested in how we operate, how we spend the money, and, you know, this is a good time to invite them to join the board. You know, maybe they'll step up.
So, um, so they're cool, we're on that advertisement and then we'll see that.
Okay.
But we do have your letter.
Yep. Am I the only one so far?
Yeah, we haven't advertised yet.
Yeah, that's it.
The only one pre-advertised.
I don't think you have much to worry about.
Well, I tell you what, it's not a strenuous job, or it's not strenuous actually. Um, we have been meeting every month religiously, every month, you know, unless there's bad weather or sickness, we can't make the corner. But our bylaws say we don't have to meet unless once a quarter. And what we decided to do this winter is not meet for the next two months. We're gonna meet in January, because all of our bills are paid, all, all, uh, how do you say, programming for advertising and things, all set in place. Everything is taken care of for the next few months. All right, and come spring, then we'll start setting up a new budget. There's also a schedule in there, I put in there, on the items we look at during the year from month to month to month, as we need to make decisions on them. And that includes setting a budget. That includes putting officers in place. Uh, the whole way. So there's this, there's this calendar in there for you to look at too, if you decide.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You go ahead.
I was just asking who's on the board.
Uh, Brittany, she's, um, from Upton. She's our president. All right, we got Linda on the board from the lodge, myself, and I believe us two are the ones that represent Newcastle. There's Stacy Hawkins, I guess, from Upton. Uh, there's Kelly from Upton. I mean, uh, there's, I, I'm saying Upton, Upton, Upton. All right, but you've got two representatives from Upton, two from the county, and two from the city. They just have to move out.
Okay. Now, my question was, down, down there on Hurricane's building, as you're going out of town, they have that beautiful mural that is falling apart. And as I understand...
As far as us trying to do anything?
He said beautification.
Exactly.
Okay.
Have a committee, take care of it. Submit paperwork for, we, we are at the doors, we're the money giver. Your statement, here you go.
So we gotta spend the money first before you'll give us some?
No, you go out there, you can find a contractor who will repair it, cover it, do whatever you want, submit it, you put the money aside, and, and once it's done, we'll pay for it.
How soon do you got to know about that?
What's that?
How soon do you have to know about that? When you're getting ready for your budget or when?
Come to the next meeting. Okay, because then that way, if you come to the next meeting, then that way, you can give us an idea about how much. And say, so we can budget for it. Because if we need to budget for it, if we don't, then we're not gonna have the money to, in order to pay for it.
But that would cost a lot.
That would cost a lot. I believe it would. It would be restoration, beautification. I believe it would. But say, I'm just one vote, okay? You're a representative on board. I'm just one vote. So it's up to everybody else. But that fits within our bylaws, I believe. We all, we'll, we'll think all, look at it and all decide on our own and vote for it or not.
Thank you. It says something needs to be done with that, or we're gonna lose it.
I've seen it, too. It's people. But, anything else?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any questions, anytime, if you call me or anybody.
We'll get together. We'll get together.
Okay.
Any mayor, council member reports? Um, I do have, um, I'd like to request a parks committee meeting, um, in regards to, um, the state park, like, some park. I got a draft back from Palm Brass. So I'd like to set up a meeting that I want to get with some of the others that are not on the council, to see when they're available as well. So if you can let me know what dates are, don't work for you, that would be greatly appreciated. So when I reach out to the other group, um, you'll know.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
That's all I have. If there's nothing else under that, I'm going to go to business. Um, the second reading of the ordinance number eight, series 2023, which head reads ordinance, an ordinance regulating permit requirements for entry removal and connection to a manhole as designated in section 26 dash 27C within the town of Newcastle. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Newcastle, Western County, Wyoming, section 26 dash, um, 26 through 27C of the Newcastle, Wyoming municipal code, be amended as follows, amending section 26 dash 27C, sanitary sewers and building sewers and connections of the same to the public sewer application and permit to connect requirements and penalty. And this is the second reading.
I'd move that we approve ordinance number eight, series 2023, on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, approved on December 4th, 2023, for second reading. Moving on to business number two, Wyoming honor camp sewer rates. Stacy will take that. Um, so I had emailed and then also provided copies of the usage and the transaction reports for the honor camp. And of course, they are still awaiting an answer for their letter requesting sewer forgiveness. So I guess the lead that's just continues to be pitched to the next meeting. And so they are just wondering if they're gonna be awarded sewer forgiveness or what the status is. Stacy, that you went back and regulated and what would be the forgiveness that we could only have, or it just be? And so, um, as, um, stated a few meetings ago, the difference, um, the amount of forgiveness that they're really requesting at this point in time is $5,886.42. But obviously, with committee meetings, there's also been discussion of offering, um, a rate for sewer as well, if I'm correct on that. Have you worked on that contract?
No. I received the contracts actually today. So, um, I think first thing tomorrow is when I begin to actually negotiate on said contract. Uh, the rates in terms of sewer and everything else, though, um, that's something the council would need to discuss, because giving a, um, you know, having a specific set out of what a rate's gonna be or differentiation between one business and another is something that's gonna be, the council's gonna have to decide on something like that.
Um, I think this is a, a good time to bring up. Um, so with our current rate structure, um, some of the businesses that, uh, that utilize water consistently, like the same volume through the calendar year, not just for, uh, for irrigation purposes, uh, are being negatively impacted, or impacted by the current rate, the way that we have it set out. So I've been approached by some business owners that are, um, in the lodging business, and, uh, their, their, um, bills are still pretty significantly high. So I wanted to talk to the rest of the council about maybe looking at our water rate right now, um, at our price per thousand, and maybe dialing it back, um, to the state average of $4.60 per thousand, um, until such time as we, uh, get our rate analysis done by our third-party contractor. Which also brings up another question. Is, uh, Greg, um, have you been able to secure the third-party contractor?
No, not yet. It's not like to do this. We lost internet this week and I couldn't email him.
Okay. Um, but I think that, um, some of the, the citizens, especially the ones in the service industries that consistently use water, um, through the winter for washing and, um, things of that nature, um, would, would see, uh, you know, a positive impact if we maybe dialed back our price per thousand, um, until we can get a good rate from the third-party contractor. So I didn't know if anybody else had any feedback on that.
If we look at, you know, not only that, but look at that first rate minimum, is that thousand, right? What is it, nineteen seventy?
That's 2153 for, for the first 2,000 sewer.
Yeah. What if we raise that? Because we remember looking at, um, all the other surrounding towns and stuff. Theirs was at least 4,000, 5,000. Um, because there's that as well.
So your proposal, Madam Mayor, would be to raise the amount of sewer that they're allowed to use before they start getting charged per thousand?
Yes. Because I know the average household says four people, they're going through the 2,000, I think, quickly. I mean, it could be either way, it would help, um, not only the businesses, but the potential.
So I was proposing that we, um, reflect, uh, a lower rate per thousand on the water. But you're also, um, proposing that we adjust the amount we charge for wastewater as well?
Either way, both would be, you know, great. But if one or the other, I think, would be helpful. Anything we do right now would be helpful. So...
I think that we should need to do something in the interim until we get a good rate.
I absolutely agree.
So should we make, should we put together a motion that says we go, like he said, to the state average, to the 460? And, I don't know.
And that would be instead of the seven?
That's for water, seven. Sewer is $9 per thousand.
Okay, and so what, what's the state average on that? Do you know?
I don't know what the state average is for wastewater, um, that current.
Madam Mayor, I don't believe anybody in the state collects that information, so...
Well, do we have a reference between before and after of the sewer rate that we hiked up?
I believe it was 263 per thousand.
263, and now it's $9? Okay.
And the state average is for four, what?
$4.60 per, per thousand for water.
Okay, and so what if we went with a sewer rate of, of $6 instead of the nine? The council think of that as a good enough, keep that for now?
For temporary?
Yeah, so we get this until we get that report. What's that look like? Is that enough? Should we go from, we went from $2, $2 and something up to nine? You know, I didn't, I didn't realize that was happening. I was sitting on that committee.
Yes, I don't have...
Yes, I'd have to probably look at numbers a little more. He said go to six?
Yeah, absolutely.
We would have to weigh in the budget here, possibly. So there might be a possible amendment to the budget as well? Can you look at that and have us know if it asks me? Or it's something? Yeah, I mean, we can try. We could either, I mean, do the figures and have that answer for next meeting to make motion, or we can make a motion today if they want to. But it will affect what the budget's at.
Both, the water and the sewer, would affect where the budget's at?
Probably. I mean, we just have to run those, the four sixty per thousand and the six dollars per thousand.
Okay, and so when can we?
That pushes it off for another two weeks.
Well, and the honor camp, I mean, the initial date of their first letter is October 11.
Well, I'm going to move here, when we get done with this, I'm going to move that we give them the forgiveness of the five thousand. But we'll discuss that when we come to it. Right now, we've got the, I really think we should, we should pull back to the four sixty and six dollars, and I think we should pass it tonight as a temporary. Till we get that other report.
So...
I so move that.
Sixty, or is it six?
Four, well, four sixty for the water per thousand, six dollars for the wastewater per thousand. Down from nine on the wastewater and down from seven on the...
I second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Just a reminder, this is a temporary until we have the study done.
I think this will provide the citizens with some relief over the holiday season and while we try to get our ducks in a row through a rate analysis through the third-party contractor. So I think this is a positive thing for the community.
Do we need to redo an ordinance or a resolution, Madam Mayor?
I think, since it's temporary, and I could be incorrect, I'm going to have to check on this. I think you can do basically a temporary resolution pending the study. What I think we probably should do is amend the motion to say temporarily have it at that rate. If not, then have a motion or allow me to re-grab the ordinance in case that we do need to have those three readings.
Okay, so I amend my motion to be the four dollars and sixty cents for the water, six dollars for the waste, and then to allow our attorney to redo the ordinance in the event that that is required by state law. Temporary.
I second.
Okay, so we have an amended motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Now, getting back to the honor camp. I'd like to make this motion, but I'm only doing it so that we can discuss. I'm not necessarily in favor of giving them five thousand dollars off. But anyway, what was the total amount of their request?
Difference...
All right, I got it, I got it. I move, Your Honor, that we give a... Forgiveness of the, to the honor camp of $5,886.42.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
Okay, when we discussed this before, we needed to come up with a number on how much each month that they used. And as I'm looking at this thing, I can't, I can't get a percentage-wise that goes off into the sewer, I mean, that goes off from plant. I can't tell that from here.
So the way that we, the computer is set up to function, like for normal residents and businesses that would be watering the lawn, it takes your November, December, January, February, and March readings and divides that by five to get an average of what should be charged for the summer months. Because they are assuming that obviously the excess for April through October is possibly going on the ground.
To irrigation.
Okay, so that's a good thing to know. And so that could be actually part of the motion.
So this is another one of the businesses or entities that's being negatively impacted because they use a constant amount of water year-round. Right? So, I mean, showers for all the inmates, washing, all the kitchen stuff that goes on, it is a constant. So I mean, I'm sure they do provide for some irrigation, but they still use a lot of water for everything else.
I think, Your Honor, I would like to amend my motion that we include Stacy's formula to arrive at a number to reduce their costs in some time. We can deduct the difference between the...
I think that'd be part of the contract, that number is going to be...
All right, and I don't need to do that?
So if we provided them with sewer forgiveness right now, then maybe we would start with a clean slate, move forward with the contract for service that Dublin's working on?
Excuse me, can I say something? As a business owner, a citizen here, you're talking about a state entity forgiving him thousand, five thousand dollars. This is a state entity, all right? This has nothing to do with the general public, nothing to do with business. You're not helping us at all. You're giving a state entity a break. What about the rest of us?
We just made a motion to give...
That was included, oh.
Okay, oh, with the dropping of, temporarily dropping of everything?
Yes.
Other than that?
Thought we were giving the regular citizens a break.
Yeah. But I just don't understand. They're budgeted a lot of money, and for all the people that they're taking care of up there, I don't see why you're giving them a break.
Well, that's why we made the motion, is so that you can say these things during the discussion of what we're doing.
I really don't see how that fits into taking care of maintaining the sewer system from there to here by giving them a five thousand dollar break. You know, next year, six months from now, they could be filing for another one. Because I've heard them before come in time and time again, filing for, you know, forgiveness. Not only state, not only the honor camp up there, but other businesses or other entities, all right, that are, you know, budgeted by the state.
Mr. Griffin, a lot of the businesses would ask ahead of time for water forgiveness during the summer months for watering, drought, things like that after. What happened was is the honor camp did not get their letter in. And so this is why it's come up.
Right.
So kind of like what you were saying with the travel commission letters two months late. It's a little later, but that's what we're looking at, working with.
Okay, yeah, but see, that's just, like you said, because that's, some of the problems we're having in town with sewer here is because their sewage is coming down into our system. Shouldn't we help, shouldn't they help maintain that system so we can disperse that sewage? All right, without the cost coming on to the rest of the communities? So as far as me as a citizen and business owner...
They're still paying a bill.
Oh, I can understand.
They're just getting a little bit of a break.
Five thousand dollar break?
Yeah.
That's quite a bet for a state entity, obviously, but that's just, okay, my personal thinking. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All in favor for this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. It's passed. All right, moving on to number three of Old Business, Main Street Memorial. I'll turn that over to Councilman Lewis.
Mick Bone asked me to present this tonight. I have the measurements here.
This is that gold light that...
Oh, yeah.
Went up at the last meeting, and we're going to have Mick Bone come in.
The monument itself is only going to be about four feet tall. It looked bigger than that in the pictures, and two foot wide. And it's not, everybody thinks it's anti-abortion, but it's anti-death. Because there's, they're starting to pass laws about owner people that cannot maintain their dignity or whatever they want. The euthanasia of them, people that have mental challenges, they're born with, like, Down's Syndrome and autism and stuff like that. That is included in there, plus the anti-abortion drive that they're putting up. And it would not cost the city anything, they just want to put it up on the ground. That they had a Main Street in the park there. And I guess that's for everybody to see it. It'd be a good location. It'd be where a lot of people walk by it. Everybody drives by there. I don't know if they want to read it up on the hill or not, but everybody drives by it.
Is the park up there designated or donated to make a specific?
Madam Mayor, we'd have to research that. I know property was donated to the city. At that time, First State Bank donated the materials. I know the honor camp and the city did the work to build the park. As far as what all is entailed in it, what we can, again, I do that property, I would have to research it.
Yeah, I think we need to check that to make sure. We should have thought about, I should have thought about that last meeting.
Okay.
So I think we need to check into that first.
Okay, move again.
I think we're hit. Can we, will you, can you research that for next meeting? Just to make sure that if the council agrees to put it there, we're not violating?
We'll look and see if there's any stipulations on that primary that was donated to us for the parks.
Is that okay with the council table that and find out?
It's better than I thought it was going to be when I was talking about the split.
Yeah, well, when I talked to Alicia a couple of weeks ago, we were looking at maybe seven tops, but we're up to nine, potentially ten. We had a new kid move in that might be wrestling as well and joining the team now. You know, so a little bit behind the, behind the start. So that's going to put us in a, in a problem when it comes to duels. You know, we're not going to win a lot of duels because we don't have anybody over 160 pounds. And so, you know, we're going to give up 40 points.
Right.
In every duel's be. So obviously, it's going to be tough to make that up. We do have some good returns.
Well, you get a couple of baddies off the couch and have them put the pop tarts down.
Right?
You can give people a run for the money.
Yeah.
Probably going to get in trouble for that one too, but you know...
Yeah, you might.
Come on, Evvies, get out there and go wrestle.
Forgetting the measurements, Paul. Department head reports, Public Works Supervisor, Greyston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two items. Scott Thompson has successfully completed his probation. I'm recommending him for full-time permanent status with a 50 cent raise for completing the probation as of November 20th of 2023.
I move that we hire Scott Thompson or that we provide Scott Thompson with a 50 cent raise for completing his probation effective the 28th of November, 2023. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you, Johnson. Jenna Goodart has also completed her entry-level driver training for CDL and received her CDL on November 28th as well. I would request a 50 cent raise for completing the CDL.
I move that Jenna Goodart be given a 50 cent raise for completing her ELDT training and backdate it to November 28th. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Does anybody have any questions from the reports?
The only outstanding thing we have is the fellow that was supposed to give us a bathroom but didn't.
I will talk about that later.
Oh, okay, all right. That's not Drake's problem anymore. That's a legal problem now.
Unfortunate, Councilman, that's not in my scope of work.
There you go.
That is all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to Police Chief Derek Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Going to rearrange a little bit the order in which I give my report. I don't think that affects anybody, but just in the interest of efficiency here. First thing I'll report on is calls for service from November 20th to today. Newcastle Police Department fielded 129 calls for service. Weston County Sheriff's Office, 73 calls. Upton Police Department, 23 calls. Newcastle Ambulance, 23 calls. Upton Ambulance, six calls. Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department, 11 calls. Upton Volunteer Fire Department, four calls. Weston County Fire Protection District, 14 calls.
When was that last one?
And then for the year, what's that?
What was your last one?
Weston County Fire Protection District.
Oh, okay.
14 calls for service. Year-to-date calls for the Newcastle Police Department is 3,051 calls. Year-to-date for the Weston County Sheriff's Office is 2,283 calls. And year-to-date for the Upton Police Department is 820 calls. I don't have year-to-date for the fire calls. Any questions on any of that? Giving an update on the Joint Powers Board. We should have funding at this point. We were, we did get two members successfully bonded, two golden members successfully bonded so we could accept the money. The city has paid their portion of the bill for the year. The county should pay their portion by the 6th of December if I remember correctly. So we should be moving forward with that. The furniture for the dispatch center will be delivered tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m., they tell me. So we should be able to get the systems and stuff stood up at the new dispatch center relatively soon. So we're hoping to start transitioning things here in the next month or so. A lot of people are asking me for a deadline of when, when is the Joint Powers Board going to take over the employees? Well, I don't, I don't have a concrete answer on that yet. But we're working on sorting out the insurance and retirement aspects of the Joint Powers Board to make sure when we transition employees, especially the city employees that are already employed, we make sure that we're giving them the same or better benefits. We're not cutting their benefits in any way. So we got to, we got to work out some details yet, but that's kind of where we're at with that. So we gotta, we gotta work out some details yet, but that's kinda where we're at with that. Does anybody have any questions on that?
All positive steps towards moving forward.
Yep, we're getting there. It's a convoluted process, but yeah, we're getting there for sure, so.
Yay.
Yeah. Let's see. We did the vehicle bidding process. We got two bids for Durango Police Pursuit Vehicles. They're all-wheel-drive Dodge Durango. John Jones Police Pursuit Vehicles came in with a bid of $112,837 for two of those vehicles. Young Auto Group, I believe they were out of Utah, came in with a bid of $115,888.69. I would recommend we accept the bid from John Jones Police Pursuit Vehicles. Doing businesses, John Jones Chrysler Dodge Jeep, Ram Fiat, and issue them a notice of award.
Are those the folks that got our radios?
Yes.
John Jones?
John Jones.
That's funny.
I, I move we accept John Jones' bid.
So that, I think, warrants a discussion if we, if we go with that.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
I think it warrants a discussion of how do we go about I end, this may require some input from Dublin, but do we try to finance these vehicles? Are we legally able to finance these vehicles? Do we do the lease purchase option through the dealership? What does the council think would be the best way to pursue that?
Well, I know John Jones does the leasing with all municipalities throughout the nation. So I don't know how that works. Maybe you can look at that paper. Because I think that was one of the big things that we liked was we don't have to fork out that $112,000 right away.
And I don't, we haven't to fork out right now.
Right. So, but that's what this John Jones does is helping with law enforcement vehicles.
When I spoke to the gentleman from the dealership the other day, he suggested we explore the option of local financing, but I don't know if state statute allows for that. I didn't have time to explore that. I felt whether anybody else has an answer to that.
Madam Mayor, if I may, that's what we've done with garbage trucks, street sweepers. We're doing with motors, we're doing a local bank lease purchase. So Cat, Cat offers a lease purchase for the loaner that we're buying right now. But to support the local businesses, we have decided to go with a local lease purchase.
Do you still assess, we have two vehicles. Can we go through both banks, going through each bank or not?
I don't see why we couldn't, but I can definitely explore those options. And I, I like the idea of this is the citizens of Newcastle's tax money. Let's buy these vehicles. We return the, the money back to the community if we can. I do like that idea. If it's feasible and generally costs effectively, we can explore those options.
Well, off the bidding and everything else, but I would in terms of him investigating it, that would probably be the first step. Because, I mean, it could be that the loans are entirely different. I know that's unlikely, but that would probably be the best course of action. I would have just another motion for that. Except that.
Okay, so. So for the, a motion to accept John Jones, we had discussion. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And then we need a motion to investigate the best option?
Yeah, allow Chief to investigate the option.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. So if you wanna investigate the best option.
Okay. Thank you, Council. I would like to extend a conditional offer of employment to a gentleman by the name of Justin Brien, who has applied for employment with us. Justin has seven years of experience as a law enforcement officer. He has some experience in Pennsylvania. He's actually a Wyoming certified peace officer currently. He was with the Kirk County Sheriff's Office up until August of this year. So he would be a pretty seamless hire. We do have a few more steps in the hiring process before we would be able to hire him. He's a 15-year Marine Corps veteran. And he's, he's looking to, to come to work for us. His pay rate would be $24.18 an hour.
And this is administrative, is he gonna be in a car ever?
No, that's a different.
Oh.
I've moved that we hire, or offer a conditional position to Justin Brien for $24.18 with one year's probation.
Yes.
With conditional offer?
I, I said
Conditional offer.
Perfect, thank you, I did kind of.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Where does he currently reside?
I believe he's currently in North Carolina, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, he's planning on moving to our community?
Yeah, he's not gonna commute from there, so.
So, but, I mean, what happened to is it still in our employee handbook that you're supposed to live within five miles of the city of Newcastle? To be employed on the PD?
But I think we changed that, didn't we?
I'm pretty sure that's not in there, but
No, it's, it's in the police policy, so it's not in the city's policy. But I think we can lend that.
It might be something that we need to look at.
Yeah.
Being that we have a, do we still have an officer in Sunday?
Yeah.
Well, um
At the time, we, beggars can't be choosers.
Yeah, understood, Chief. Yeah, we're making it work with what we had.
Yeah, we're looking a lot better as time's going on here. Obviously, we're getting some, some interest in the deployment and things are starting to stabilize out a little bit, so.
How long has he been on his own, why do you mean?
Uh, just since August.
Oh.
So, yeah, he'll be.
He wants to come back?
Yeah, he wants to come back.
Can't say it's a blame.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Alright. Administrative assistant position. When we, I, I had the epiphany the other day. Things, I get hit with something new every day, it seems like, but when we transition all the dispatchers to the Joint Powers Board and no longer have them under our umbrella, there are a lot of clerical duties that they do on a daily basis that services that will no longer be provided to us. One of the biggest things is we have to do what they call NiBRS reporting. And I honestly can't remember off the top of my head what NiBRS stands for. But it's what used to be UCR, you're familiar with that. And it's a fairly labor-intensive reporting to the federal government about crime statistics. That's one big job that they do. Entering citations and warnings. Just a, a lot of different clerical things that they do for us on a daily basis. We won't have that anymore. So I, I was going to try to run without any support staff, just to keep the budget as low as I could, but I'm not actually asking for a motion tonight or anything of that nature, but I'm just I guess letting you know that I'm, I'm gonna start exploring the option to see if I have room in my budget for that position. We did advertise for that under Chief Bowles and just in the chaos of everything, we never ended up hiring anybody or even interviewing anybody. We do have some applications out there. I feel kinda bad that we didn't do anything with that, but just in, in the chaos of the situation, we didn't get to it. But I am gonna try to run some numbers and see see where we're at to see if, if I can afford that position. So I just, I kinda wanted to let you guys know that, that's something we probably need to look at. And hopefully, we don't have any more big surprises like Motive or Voice Products or tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars that didn't get paid in the past that does continue to wipe out the budget, but so I, I just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
I have a question for you, Chief.
Go ahead.
So the, when the, the Joint Powers Board takes over and those ladies that have been working for us for all these years are under the employment of the Joint Powers Board, we somehow lose that, that reporting aspect of, of their job? So it doesn't translate from the police department to
No.
It's not something that they do while they're, they're working for us?
It, it has to come from each individual agency. And being that the Joint Powers Board will be its own entity, so for example, currently, the sheriff's office has to do their own NiBRS reporting. The police department dispatchers do not do that for them. It has to come from each individual agency. Upton PD does their own NiBRS reporting. They have a administrative assistant or, or something of that nature that part-time position for them, but she does that, that stuff for them. So it, it does have to come from each individual agency. So where they're not employees of the police department any longer, they won't do that for us anymore, so.
So that was just an added benefit of us having our own dispatch was that the dispatchers provided that service?
Yes.
Okay, understood, thank you.
I think I've covered everything. I, I do have a, if you guys don't mind, I do have a quick PowerPoint presentation for the, the KNI stuff. I'll hook up to the TV and push that, if everybody's okay with that.
While, while you're setting that, you brought up the voice. But is that still something that that other town may be interested in per se?
Yes, we actually, I think I forwarded Stacy to email me the other day. I did forward it to you, I can't remember. Yes, so the city of Saratoga is entrapping in purchasing that voice recorder. I need to make a phone call and talk to somebody about that. Hopefully, we can offload that, maybe recoup some money out of that deal. This is pretty short and sweet, but just give you some ideas.
Sweet, we got Netflix.
I'm right in the talk and you guys have been watching Netflix a long ago. A year since I watched it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The Joint Powers Board, will their, the dispatchers still have their retirement when they move over there?
Yeah, it'll transfer. That's one of the things we're trying to iron out right now, is the state retirement system.
And they just have to throw off different paperwork because that's what's not allowed to do.
I know that.
They move over to
I know the recension officers here are under a different
Think you're under HDMI type.
Yeah, so like if they move over to
There we go.
Dispatch, we just have to throw off paperwork under different positions.
Didn't we have a KNI through the sheriff's department here in your respect?
I don't know.
Hey, Gary, you do the health issues.
He retired and health issues and took the dog with him?
Well, the dog's retired. The officer's still here.
Oh, okay. I, I thought they both left, you know?
The officer's still here, they retired the dog.
So there is ba- basically a trained KNI officer within account?
And he needs a new buddy.
He needs a new buddy?
Is everybody able to see that okay?
Yep.
Alright. Bear with me here. So I kinda just did some basic information about a dog. Most people know what narcotics detection KNI does. Because a dog can smell things we can't, they can find all sorts of stuff. So the primary purpose is it detects the odors of illicit controlled substance. Now, that doesn't always mean there's a controlled substance there. It means there has been, but the odor of a controlled substance there, so they'll detect on odors on door handles or anything like that. So if you handle drugs, go to open a door handle, they'll detect that odor that's left on the door handle, that residual odor. So what that does is it helps us develop probable cause for searches for controlled substances, primarily is what the dog would do. It helps in locating controlled substances in vehicles, houses, buildings, and other containers. There's various different ways to do that, so if if you're on a traffic stop, that's considered a mobile exception to a search warrant. So if you're gonna search somebody's property, by law, you have to have a search warrant. There are certain exceptions, one of those is a mobile exception. So if that dog indicates on a car, that's probable cause that there is illicit activity in that vehicle. By, and that gives you reason to search the vehicle. Sometimes we'll deploy canines in, in houses for things such as a probation parole check. So somebody that's on probation, offender that's currently under probation terms, that their, their homes are to be searched at will by probation parole, we'll go and deploy a dog and assist. And when I say we, speaking from past, but that's, that's what we would be doing currently. Let's see here. So they help to develop probable cause to obtain search warrants when needed, because you don't always need a search warrant. Check the compliance of offenders on probation, that's what I was talking about with the house searches. Arrest offenders and deter crime. They're a natural deterrent for schools and other public areas. So obviously, if you see a drug dog deployed with a cop, you, if you're into that kinda thing, you're probably gonna avoid doing that in that area, right? So it's one of those things that's gonna help keep drugs out of schools and stuff like that.
Clear to school, yeah.
They also, there's, there's a lot of KNI handlers out there that seize a tremendous amount of money that is involved in criminal activity.
Well, because the money got into the drugs and the drugs smell?
No, not necessarily. Sometimes there can be drug odor on money and they will, they will alert on the money because of the drug odor. But a lot of times, the money will be where the drugs used to be. So I'll, I'll give you a
Okay.
I, I don't wanna get too adept and give too many trade secrets here, we'll call them. But if you have a southbound vehicle, you stop that vehicle. For whatever reason, you run a dog on, whether it's a free air sniff, whether it's a reasonable suspicion sniff, the dog alerts on the vehicle and you find a bunch of money in a compartment. If that's a southbound vehicle, that's not uncommon. Because drugs usually run north, money usually runs south in this particular community. Highway 85, if, if you're talking like interstate drug trafficking type of activities, which wouldn't be primarily what we were, what we're tasked with. But that's a lot of times where you're gonna find that money. And there is a thing out there called asset forfeiture, where you can actually seize that money and repurpose it for law enforcement equipment and things of that nature.
Finders keepers.
That's a difficult thing to do. It's a convoluted process and it's something you have to be pretty careful with. So that's why potential, that doesn't mean it's gonna happen, but that is a potential going out there. They are also trained in trailing. There's, there's different terminology. One's tracking, one's trailing. These dogs are trained to trail. So they, they trail based on ground disturbance and air scent. So it's a combination of smelling the disturbed ground and the human scent in the air. So they follow a human scent, basically. They can find lost people, lost children that have wandered away from home, things like that. They also use them in article and evidence recovery. So one of the, one of the examples, the, the guy that runs the KNI service in Gillette gave me was you respond to a call of domestic violence. And a lot of times in those situations, there's a lot of manipulation that goes on. So offender takes the keys to the car, trying to keep the victim from leaving, and chucks them out in the grass. And nobody knows where the keys to the car went. That, you can deploy that dog and give that dog a certain command and that dog knows that it's looking for a human scent at that point. So it's, that dog's gonna go searching for that human scent and find those keys for you. And you can recover evidence that. And you can recover evidence that way, so that. The the guy said that a human scent will stay on an item for approximately six hours. After that, the item, the scent dissipated and the item just becomes part of the environment. So after six hours, the dog's probably not gonna fight. One of the other examples he gave is they had a destruction of property call one time and he said they never would have solved it without a dog. But what happened is these kids shot up the house, I think it was, or some sort of building with paintball guns, busted a bunch of windows out. And they left a bottle cap behind. And the dog found the bottle cap because it had human scent on it, so he knew it was fresh. He collected the bottle cap. The dog then trailed back through his neighborhood and through all these houses. Got to the back fence of this house and he found the bottle that the cap went to. So you're connecting A to B, right? And said, and on the on the uh table on the back porch of the house was all the paintball guns and things to shoot. The dog solved a destruction property case for him that they otherwise never would have solved. Um, he talked about finding a nine millimeter handgun that was involved in some kind of assault in a bar that was thrown under a dumpster. So they they will help you recover evidence. They call it evidence recovery, evidence and article recovery. So they are trained in more things than just uh illicit controlled substances. So narcotics detection, the four drugs that they train on cocaine, marijuana, methamphetamine, and heroin. And I'm guessing your first question is, what's the biggest biggest drug in the news nowadays? Fentanyl, right? Why don't they, why don't they train to detect on fentanyl? It's prescribed. It's legal. It's not necessarily legal to possess. Can't possess it without a valid prescription. It's still a Schedule Two controlled substance. But they do use fentanyl. They have fentanyl on the ambulance. They do use fentanyl in medical practices, so.
People have fentanyl patches on them for pain mitigation.
So if you have a fentanyl patch and our dog detects on that fentanyl patch and we search you, we just violate your fourth amendment rights. That's why they're not trained to to search or for, to detect fentanyl. Obviously. The they're trained to um alert to the owner. Those four substances and their change in behavior alerts the handler that there is something there. That's what, that what gives us probable cause for a search. So we talked about trailing a little bit to make sure between ground disturbance and air scent. And this allows the dog to move more freely, so they're not always nosed to the ground. They're more up and down, up and down. And they follow a human scent. Like we talked about, used to commonly used to assist in finding missing people, children that have wandered away. I do have a a story about a very sad case where we had a child wander away and that child didn't make it. I wish we had something like this in that situation. Can't say for a hundred percent that it would've worked given the weather circumstances, but sure would've been nice to try. Use for evidence and article recovery, both criminal and non-criminal. Evidence recovery or lost property. We kind of already talked about that. These statistics. Came off of a website called Canines for Kids. This number to me. Is almost not even believable. Two hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and sixty-five kilograms of narcotics seized out of twenty-nine dogs placed in sixteen schools. I couldn't even believe it. I don't know if I do believe it, but that's that's the data that they gave us. Wrap your mind around it, how should we? So primarily. The Police Department's K nine during school year would be deployed in schools. The idea is to detect and deter illicit illicit substance abuse. There's way more of that than we. Even like to have to admit that goes on in and around schools. Kids these days have access to so much stuff, it's unbelievable. Uh, we're also exploring the option, working with the police department, to deploy the K nine in their schools as well. Some of that is tied to the opioid funds that we may use to purchase some of the equipment for for the dog. Some of that is earmarked for Upton as well, so we're kinda sharing our our uh.
Just off the top of your head, I guess, at this point, but uh what percentage as far as time commitment would be between Newcastle and Upton?
So we, we didn't really do a a percentage say, but what I said is we would come up with some, what my. Now, this is a very loosely structured.
I understand.
Idea, but what I offered up was the idea of three uh school deployments a year. So you say you do two in one semester, one in the other, or maybe it should be four, you know? But I said maybe three deployments in the school each year and then three uh deployments for saturation patrols. And and we'll talk a little bit more about saturation patrols in a minute, what that entails, but. So three times a year, I send the dog and handler over there for a day. They go through the Upton schools. And ideally, if this all comes to fruition, we would partner with the Sheriff's Office because running. Uh, an entire school in a parking lot with one dog, it's gonna wear that dog out. The dog's not gonna be effective right into it, so you need. Ideally, you probably want three or four dogs, but.
Now, would that, that would be notified, non notified?
Non notified.
Good.
Yeah, we don't. Yeah, that's it. That's the way to do that, so. We also, like I, I guess I just talked about this a little bit, but wanna develop partnerships with the Sheriff's Office. Um, new joint K nine deployments in schools and another law enforcement encounters and operations. Yeah, I'll talk about that a little bit more. Primarily, ours will be deployed in the school. Frequency effort weekly. It'll probably be more often than that. It'll be a mix of uh vehicles, backpacks, rooms. Different types of searches. It'll probably be more like daily. Sniffs of bags, lockers, vehicles, detecting deter substance abuse is our is our idea behind the whole thing. Other deployments to law enforcement contacts where illicit drug uses, like um, that's as needed, so. It could be multiple times a week. It could be multiple times a day. It just depends on the day, week, or month. It 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 all varies. Uh, you can sniff vehicles, residents, buildings, containers, where illicit substances may be concealed. Um, there's there's difference. Legal requirements that attach to each one of those things based on the circumstances. Saturation controls, no interdiction operations. Uh, that's something you schedule. You don't just have one dog that goes out and does a saturation patrol. It's kinda hard to saturate any area with law enforcement presence without multiple cops. So the idea there is you'll have multiple officers go out. Do stops, make contacts, whatever, and do free air sniffs with that dog um on those contacts to try to. Try to detect controlled substance type of behavior. So. The dog is not married to the school. If if an officer is at the point where they suspect illicit controlled substance use, then need that. Need that alert from the dog to get them over the hump to either apply for a search warrant or do a search based on a a warrantless exception. They'd call for that dog. This is kinda redundant slide. We already talked about saturation patrol, interdiction operations. So the, here's the cost breakdown. This particular dog. Read that number and then I'll tell you it's cheap. Ten thousand dollars is pretty cheap. This is a little different type of dog. It's not a Malinois. It's not a Shepherd. It doesn't come with a fourteen or fifteen thousand dollar price tag. It is a little cheaper. Um, this includes the dog, training for the dog and handler, leash, collars, harnesses. Basic stuff that comes with a dog. This also includes monthly training um. For the officer and dog at the B three facility. So every month, the officer would go over there basically for a day and train with other K nine handlers from around the region. This is really important. I have. Seen K nine handlers that isolate themselves from other handlers and it usually ends badly for whatever reason. So we need to make sure they're interacting with the other people in their field and staying up on the latest and greatest trends and training and all of that. Outdoor kennel is approximately six hundred dollars. We price that out of bomb bears. Indoor kennels, you can, you can spend anything you want. I'm sure they get more expensive than four hundred, but we wouldn't spend any more than that on them. A vehicle kennel is usually around five thousand dollars. I helped get a couple different vehicles outfitted with vehicle kennels and I actually built a kennel myself, so. We're gonna wipe that five thousand dollars off there. We'll we'll install a kennel. I talked to the guy from B three, asked if there was any issue with us doing that. He said absolutely not, as long as you have sufficient room for the dog. And you have a secondary escape route for the dog if if the vehicle's gonna crash. Uh, food, we're gonna look into the program through Purina where they provide food at that cost to the agency. If the only thing that the uh the vendor cautioned us on is for some reason, Purina Dog Food doesn't agree with the dog. You gotta go a different route. That would be the only. Only uh variable there. Vet bills, uh, the vendor recommended budgeting fifteen hundred dollars a year for vet bills. Handler care, I, when I talked to you guys last time, I thought it was a half hour at an overtime rate per day. It's just a half hour straight time. And you can do that in different ways. You can flex it out. Somebody, they get a half an hour to. They go all a half an hour early or something like that, so you don't have to actually pay that. Half hour every day. You don't have to pay it out, so to say. So funding, um donations from private businesses or citizens. We've already had one individual approach us and say, I will buy the dog. I will go buy the dog and bring it to you right now. He was that interested. He was very adamant that I will write that check for you now. I want that dog in the school. So I don't think funding's gonna be that big of an issue. What we need to sort out and what I need to to call Dublin and have a conversation about is legalities behind handling this money. I wanna make sure it's done right. Um, I was under the understanding that you can't donate money to a government entity. I guess I was potentially incorrect on that. What you can't do is get a tax deduction for donating money to a public entity. I don't know if you have any input on that or.
In terms of actually donating, I think it was completely fine to donate uh money to a governmental entity. In terms of what your IRS fallout would be, I have no idea. The uh. The thing with this, though, I I I'm assuming if you're talking about the Western County Peace Officers Association, if they would be, you know, kind of working. You know, as you guys would be working together, that'd be something you know I would have to research a little bit to do.
So just to let you guys know, the last two dogs the Sheriff's Office has run were owned by the Western County Peace Officers Association. They did, they handled all the funding. Um, money was donated to them. They paid for the dog, they paid for the vet bills, they paid for everything. It was all through donated monies. One of the things that they have a little heartburn over is the. They don't really have any good numbers on the success of the dog program, the the, how much the dog was deployed or anything like that. So one thing that they brought up is they, they want a report on what the dog's doing. They don't just wanna be out there asking these private citizens or businesses for money and go, I don't know if the dog is doing any good or not. So they want to know that the program is successful and and being utilized the way it should be. So that's. That's an opportunity, running, running the dog through the Peace Officers Association. So the city wouldn't actually own it. Just like the county hasn't owned either one of the dogs that they ran. But maybe we don't wanna go that route. That's that's to be determined, I guess. But the other uh avenue for funding is possibly using some of the opioid funds. I talked about a little bit. Uh, Upton PD's entitled to some of that. We're entitled to some of that. The county's already taken their chunk to do their dog program. They're doing a whole lot more elaborate program than we are. They're doing a dual purpose dog and. Which is the dog's more expensive, the training's more expensive, and the equipment's more expensive. They're a very aggressive dog that you have to, they're they're a lot higher maintenance. Uh, there's a lot more training that goes into them, things like that. I don't think we wanna deploy a a full-blown patrol dog in the school. I think that would be a terrible idea, so. We're not going that route, but. The only thing the city would have to cover is the handler care, which is the half an hour day and how would we decide to do that? To stay within our budget is how we decide to do that, so. Any questions on that?
How how soon you think this can go go into effect?
So we have um. We have a quote from B three K nine for ten thousand dollar flat for the dog. And the little bit of equipment that goes with the dog, that includes the training, everything. He said, when we talked to him the other day, we talked to him at length. And I asked, you know, could we go into the summertime before we do the training for the officer? If we were to, if we were to kick this off, and he said. He would kinda rather not wait that long. He likes to put a class together where he has several dogs and several officers all running at the same time. Uh, because otherwise you get into where you're doing a little bit of training here and a little bit of training there and it's scattered out over six months. He said he likes to just get it started, run through the whole program, and be done with it. So it'll probably come early this, or early in mid-spring, I would guess, if we decide to do this, so. Because the the dog and the officer both need to be trained.
So I had citizens come to me with a couple of concerns. Um, I think you've addressed some of them in your presentation. Um, one of the concerns was, uh, why are we looking at um getting a dog when we're not fully staffed? So, um, how close are we to being fully staffed?
So right now, uh, Officer Parrish just started this morning. That puts us at uh. Quick count right there. That puts us, puts us at five officers and me, so we're at six. We're, I'm. I guess I I I look at it as being budgeted for eight. Um, we have Officer, or Mr. Breon that's interested in coming and work for us. I don't foresee any reason, you know, hitting something that pops up that I didn't expect. I don't see any reason he could, he wouldn't be able to come on. So right now, we have enough officers to cover one officer per shift. And we should be getting away from all the overtime for the officers, so. So we're getting pretty close, but I guess to answer your question quick and very one-two officer short.
Okay, and then I appreciate that answer, and then uh, um, the second concern was um. Uh, in regards to um, to uh the county having a dog, right? So why did we need a dog? But you just said at the beginning of your presentation that the county has retired their dog. Is that?
They have. They're they're getting another dog, though.
Okay.
But some of that is, so you can only run a dog so often, right? And if you got the dog run a day shift and night shift stops a vehicle, that dog might not be available, you know? So having two of them is going to help spread that service a lot, a lot better. And especially when it's, you know, their dog's gonna be deployed wherever they decide to deploy it. Ours is primarily gonna be deployed in the school. We have, we have an issue there and it needs to be taken care of, and I think that's, that's important and. You know. I'll be careful how I say this, but. The county is going to. Probably run their dog when and where they feel like. I'd probably have a little bit more aggressive approach in that we're gonna do some saturation patrols and we're gonna go looking pretty hard. Hopefully, they all assume play along. I don't know if they will. I don't know if they won't, but uh, not to discredit them or say anything bad, but. I probably have a little bit more aggressive nature about the way I I I look at at the drug problem, so. I probably have a little bit more aggressive nature about the way I, I, I look at, at the drug problem, so, um, I'm gonna attack it a little bit more aggressively, I guess, to put it gently, so.
So we already had, um, three letters from the school district in favor of getting the dog. And then you're also saying, because the cost was another factor that some of the citizens spoke with me about, but it sounds like there really wouldn't be any overhead costs except for the half hour.
The half hour is the only thing that the city, you know, it, it all depends on how we do it too. It, it's, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not standing here promising that the city of Newcastle is not gonna incur a dire worth of cost, but, but I, I am kind of a tight one. And I do try to, I do try to do things as, as efficiently as I can. And, and if we do run it through the peace officers, they will get the donations and all of that to pay for the food and the vet bills. And it, and it would be virtually at no cost to the city except for the half an hour a day. And then we do have to figure out how to pay for, um, kennels and things like that. I mean, they could probably do that too, but I, I just try to find other funding sources if I, if I can. And we did talk to Bomb Cars about doing some, doing a donation, uh, for kennels and shelter and things like that. And the regional, or the, the manager here locally said he didn't have the authority to do that, but we could apply for that. And, uh, he said, uh, he, he encouraged us to do that, but you got to apply through the corporate office, I guess, so. Yeah, cost wise, it really should be a, a little cost to the taxpayer and that's the way I wanted to do it, because, you know, we've, hope I don't offend anybody in here, but I feel like there's a lot of money that's been spent that I wish we could have done a whole lot different way because I think, you know, especially going with the two dispatches and all that stuff, thank God we got that worked out, but I think there was a lot of money there that we shouldn't have spent, in my own opinion. And I didn't feel like it was right to come back and say, hey taxpayers, can we get another fifteen thousand dollars to do this project, so? And I, I knew, I, I knew there were some private people interested in donating, so that's why I elected to try to go that route instead. I guess it is, at the cost of a couple very specific taxpayers, but that's, that's their choice. But this is the dog that we're looking at. They're calling him a pit mix, they are doing a DNA test to see just what all he has in him. And, uh, it's, it's kind of unique the way they do it. The, the dog has to have what they call a hunt drive and they have to have a pretty intense hunt drive. He talks about having this dog around other dogs, around other people, taking them into stores. He's no issue showing aggression towards any people, but I guess he doesn't really get hunt drive. So that's, that's a good thing. He'd be trained for narcotics protection and trailing like we talked about. He's about forty pounds, they estimated him to finish out about fifty pounds. That's really nice because they're easy to handle, you don't have to have a, a school bus to haul him around in. Some of those kennels and those with the big Malinois and Shepherds, they get really big and they end up extending into the backs of the SUVs and stuff, they take up a lot of room, they're expensive. So it's kind of nice to have a little bit smaller dog for what we're doing. Uh, and he's, he's owned by Greg Brothers, who's the owner of B three training and boarding in Gillette. Uh, Greg Brothers has come highly recommended, he, I believe he was with Gillette PD for, uh, at least twenty years through retirement. I think it was around like twenty-seven or something, if I remember right, but don't quote me on that. But he's, he trains most, most of the dogs in the region and everybody I've talked to says great things about him, so. And he's been very helpful in giving us information and all that, so. Any other questions?
Good looking animal.
Chief, is Greg Brothers, are they the same ones that train the dogs that come down to assist with the missing rancher or the owner's fault?
Yes, I believe so. That was, the dog was owned by, uh, City of Rochester.
They had a Rochester and one had a Gillette that came out.
Martin Kuchka.
And I was able to watch both of those dogs work and.
Yeah.
Phenomenal.
Yeah, they said, uh, they said the one out of Rochester is extremely good. Yeah, I guess I'm not sure about the other one, but yeah. Anything else I can answer for you or confuse you with?
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Nice, nice presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Uh, Chief, so if you could get with, uh, views in regards to the funding aspect of it and then next meeting, we can maybe put that motion to go forward or not?
Okay, sounds good.
Anything else?
Uh, I think that covers all my.
Any questions for Chief? Uh, moving on to attorney, uh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the only thing I need to discuss now that we've talked about the water contracts, I did receive those today, so I will be looking at those and moving forward with, uh, negotiations with those entities. Um, and I will obviously keep the council updated as to how that's going, I assume it should be fine, but you never know. The other thing I wanted to, uh, tell the council is that today is the final date for the filing or the due date for the answer on the UBC precast lawsuit. Barring some sort of eleventh hour filing today, I'm gonna call in the morning and see if there was an answer. And if there's not, um, the next step would be to actually file a default on Mr. Hoskins for his failure to answer the lawsuit. In that regard, you know, um, it's obviously been trying, but I kind of, I think we all kind of assumed this was the, the end result is how it was going to be. And I will keep the council apprised of what happens next after I file the default, so. And that's everything I have, Madam Mayor.
Would you be willing to email newsletter on the result of that tomorrow or the next day?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the city attorney? Um, city clerk treasurer Stacy Hager? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any questions for city clerk? Any standing committee reports? Any other business? Claims against the city dated December fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Madam Mayor, I move that we pay the claims against the city. Second?
Okay, we will motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Your honor, I move to adjourn.
Second?
Okay, we will motion, um, in second, all in, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Adjourned at eight thirty-six. Thank you guys for your attention.